Everything good?
How far away was that incident from your building?
One building. I couldn't get in.
Did you tell them who you were?
They all went, "I can't get through it." The shot came. So they let me in the emergency exit. I know the guy. He waves every morning. He's white. Can't believe we shot him. I guess he threw knives at me.
Hey, that's why you couldn't run out of the truck. Whole set.
Baker acting again.
Howdy.
Hey.
Ooh, chilly in here. Hey, Mayor. How are you?
How are you there?
Hello, Mayor.
Hello. How are you?
Good, and you?
Good. Just got a voice on my phone.
Hot outside.
Oh.
Still a tad bit warm out.
All I'm doing is paying these owners to come and clean out my bathrooms.
At the restaurant?
Huh?
At home or at the restaurant?
No. A lot of old people. I don't have any toilet paper. I mean, towel paper anymore, so they can't stuff up with that.
Oh, God.
Hello, Commissioner.
Hey, how are you? Thanks for the answer.
You're welcome. Come on.
Hello, Mayor.
I thought the mayor was done.
Well, Mr. Dowd.
We should talk to... Oh, yeah.
Hello, Commissioner.
Yeah.
Hey, how's it going?
The performance? Again, I'm honest with you, Commissioner.
All right.
Well. Yeah, that's it. It's just what it is. This cost me eight hundred dollars to have a bathroom plumbed. Week ago. I'm bored. Oh. Thank you. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to our meeting. We're now ready to start our meeting. City Attorney, would you read it into the record, please, sir?
Mr. Mayor, if you'll take the roll to the clerks, have a good place to start.
I was gonna go after you said that.
Thank you, Eric.
Roll call, please, City Clerk.
Commissioner Castillo?
Here.
Commissioner Good? Commissioner Schwartz?
Here.
Vice Mayor Seifel?
I'm here.
Mayor Ordus?
Yep.
City Manager Dodge?
Here.
City Attorney Goran?
I'm here.
Do you have a quorum?
Okay, City Attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Mayor Commission. The public hearing, number one, on the agenda this evening is the fire assessment public hearing. It reads as follows. It's public hearing twenty-three dash zero five ninety-two. For the purpose of the public's considerations, consideration of re-imposing fire protection special assessments for the provision of fire protection services within the city of Pembroke Pines for the fiscal year twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four. The legal and operational purpose of this hearing and of the imposition of the fire rescue assessment is to receive public comment on the proposed assessments. These assessments for each parcel of property will be based upon each parcel's classification and the total number of billing units attributed to that particular parcel. Under section one sixty-six point oh twenty-one of Florida statutes and section one sixty-six point oh forty-one of the Florida statutes, the city, through the city administration, has perfected the appropriate basis upon which the city commission this evening may review and ultimately impose the fire assessment resolution. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Public hearing.
Okay. Anybody want to speak from the public? On a public hearing? I'll close the public hearing. City Attorney?
Thank you, Mayor Commission. Absent public comment as required by law. The next item on the agenda is the actual resolution itself, which will be considered by the Mayor and Commission. Is also open to public comment, public discussion. Item number one reads as follows. It's a motion to adopt proposed resolution number twenty twenty-three R dash thirty-three, which for the record is a resolution of the City Commission of the City of Pembroke Pines, Florida, relating to the provision of fire services, facilities and programs in the city of Pembroke Pines, Florida, re-imposing fire assessments against assessed property located within the city of Pembroke Pines for the fiscal year beginning on October one, twenty twenty-three. Approving the rate assessment, approving the assessment role, providing for separability and providing for an effective date. This, Mr. Mayor and Commission, would be a public hearing. Is required by state law for the imposition of a fire rescue assessment under the state statutes I cited to earlier. Twenty twenty-three R three-three on the floor for your consideration, Mayor and Commission, and the public's comment. Thank you.
Okay, I've got a motion by Commissioner Castillo, second by the Vice Mayor. Discussion, public hearing. Anyone want to speak from the public? Hearing none. Call a roll, please.
Commissioner Castillo?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Seifel?
Yes.
Commissioner Schwartz?
Yes.
Mayor Ordus?
Yes.
Motion passed.
And for the record, Mr. Mayor and Commission, the permanent number for this resolution legally imposed as a matter of law is thirty-eight four three eight four zero. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Public hearing number two, City.
Okay. For the purpose of the record, the fire assessment public hearing has been closed by the mayor. The item up before the Commission now is public hearing number two, which is the following. It's an open nuisance public abatement public hearing. The proposed resolution is number twenty twenty-three R dash thirty-four with regard to a nuisance abatement for public hearing number two. It's consideration of imposing and providing for collection of non-ad valorem assessments for nuisance abatement within the city of Pembroke Pines, Florida for the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four fiscal year. Purpose of this resolution and the purpose of this public hearing is a matter of law under the city's code of ordinances and under state statute is to receive public comment on the proposed assessments. The assessments for each assessed parcel of property will be based upon the costs incurred by the city in remedying the nuisance of that particular property. Public comment is permitted, Mayor and Commission, under this portion of the public hearing. If there's no public hearing, then, Mayor, you can close the public hearing and direct that we read the resolution to the record, at which time either the affected party can speak on the record or others who would so choose to speak on the subject of this particular nuisance abatement.
Thank you. I'll open up public hearing. Anyone want to speak on the item? I'll close the public hearing. City Attorney?
Thank you very much, Mayor. The resolution for the record, which is provided for by state law and by the city's code of ordinances and charter, reads as follows. It's a motion to adopt proposed resolution number twenty twenty-three R thirty-four, which is, for the record, a resolution of the City Commission of the city of Pembroke Pines, Florida, relating to the provision of nuisance abatement on certain real properties by the city in accordance with chapter one zero one of the city's code of ordinances, approving the collection of a nuisance abatement special assessment on real property that has been specifically and specially benefited by the city's abatement of nuisances thereon, approving a nuisance abatement assessment role, providing for conflict, providing for separability, and finally, for the record, providing for an effective date. Item twenty twenty-three R thirty-four on the floor for consideration and public hearing, Mayor and Commission. Thank you.
Anybody like to speak on this in the public? Hearing none. I'll call for a motion. On item two? Commission? City Attorney, what are we doing?
The item is on the floor, Mayor consideration, which is to close the hearing and to adopt the resolution.
Do I hear a motion? Do I hear a motion?
I'll move it.
Moved by Commissioner Schwartz?
Second. Second, Mr. Mayor.
Second by Commissioner Good. All right, discussion, Commissioner Schwartz?
I know. I'll wait.
What's that?
I'll wait.
No, go ahead.
Two short years ago, the City Commission said that if public dollars were going to be expended on private property to get it cleaned up, that we need to have a vehicle to put the money back into the public coffers. So this resolution tonight is regarding one property within the city in which the city expended over eight thousand dollars in order to protect the life, safety and health of the surrounding community. And that's the reason why it's here. So that's all my comments on that, Mayor.
Okay, Commissioner Good.
No comments, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, discussion further, Vice Mayor?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. I just have two quick questions. It talks about the costs that are incurred. So those would be, I guess, to City Manager or those would be the actual cost of what was necessary in order to bring that property into compliance. Is that correct? The actual cost?
Yes, Commissioner.
And those costs are determined based upon what the city has had to spend either in work hours or supplies or replacements. And that's all documented for each instance, correct?
Everything has been documented. If you want the specifics, Mr. Diacro is here this evening. He can explain it to you.
No, I just want to make sure that that's it and that's how we're determining the actual cost of what it is. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, further discussion. All right, I'll close the public hearing. I think I already did that. Call a roll, please.
Commissioner Schwartz?
Yes.
Commissioner Good?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Seifel?
Yes.
Commissioner Castillo?
Yes.
Mayor Ordus?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you, Mayor and Commission. For the record, the permanent number for the resolution, which will be appropriately filed with the Broward County filed with the Broward County Property Praiser and the Revenue Collection Division, is number thirty-eight forty-one. And for the record, Commissioner Good is in the, is in the House, is on the dais and is able to vote, and the vote has been taken by the clerk. Thank you.
Good. All right, call a roll, call, please, for a five-thirty meeting.
Commissioner Castillo?
Here.
Commissioner Good?
Here.
Commissioner Schwartz?
Here.
Vice Mayor Seifel?
I'm here.
Mayor Ordis?
Yes.
City Manager Dodge?
Here.
City Attorney Goran?
I'm here.
We have a call.
City Attorney, SM one, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Commission. The item for the special meeting agenda is as follows. It's referred to as SM one, and the number assigned is twenty-two-three twelve, twenty-five dash twelve. It's a motion of past proposed ordinance number twenty-two-three twelve on first reading, which for the record is an ordinance of the city of Pembroke Pines, Florida, amending chapter fifty of the city's code of ordinances entitled Water and Sewer Regulations by specifically amending section fifty-point-ten of the city code titled City Commission Approval for Connection to a City Utility, establishing a policy that the city will not provide water or sewer services to any property outside of the city's municipal boundaries when the city commission has determined that the proposed use of such property is noxious, offensive, contrary to the best interests of the city, or adverse to the health, safety, and welfare of the city's residents. Providing for separability, providing for conflicts, providing for codification, and finally, for the record, providing for an effective date. It's a public hearing on the floor for your consideration, Mayor and Commission. SM one. Thank you, Mayor.
Anybody wanna speak on the item? Mr. Farkas? Three minutes, sir. Three minutes. Calm, calm, three minutes if you don't mind.
My name's Kenneth Farkas. I live at fifty-three thirty-one, Southwest one hundred and ninety-ninth Avenue, and I'm talking tonight about this proposed ordinance. I guess my question is this. I think we're not calling it what it is, but this is truly here to try and prevent an incinerator from being built at the Broward County landfill. And I would hope that prior to putting this on our legislative agenda, that the city attorney would have provided you with the precedent that allows for such a move to be made. And the reason I state that is because I spent the afternoon looking up on Google and other search engines, any kind of time when a municipality denies a county the rights to utilities, and I was unable to find any previous examples of this anywhere in Florida. So if we're gonna sit there and do this only to be sued by a much richer organization, meaning a taxing authority that's gonna be created that just taxes the residents for what they spend on legal fees, they will sue you for this. So I hope we're ready for that because that's what we're doing. And speaking of the incinerator, if we're really trying to prevent this, the only way to do so is to prevent the authority from being ratified, which has yet to be done. And that's to bring the participation below seventy-five percent. You were all given a gift by Dade County a couple of weeks ago. You knew about this five months ago and did nothing, but that's a separate issue. But Dade County did you a favor. And what happened? You showed up at their meeting? Miramar showed up at the meeting? I don't know how many cities showed up, but obviously Miramar is really upset, and I would hope Weston is. I don't know, did the other cities show up? The cities that aren't gonna be affected by this? The other twenty-eight cities that are part of this SWWG that are gonna decide the future? No, they didn't. So perhaps our leaders need to go visit their members of Weston and Miramar and let them know that when it came to the Dade County incinerator, their fellow cities didn't show up, and they will not show up when it's built not in their backyard. And we've made it easy for them by not participating in this. Now, again, they made this announcement in March, so we've all known about it, and the clock is done in about two weeks. Because once you start this authority, the cities are no longer gonna look for alternatives. The cities are gonna be paying two million dollars a year for this authority, paying an executive director four hundred thousand dollars, who was hired by people that have made it public that they want an incinerator, for a county that's paying half the bill that has already made requests for proposals for an incinerator outside of the SWWG. So you got two weeks. I hope you use them wisely.
Thank you, sir. City Attorney, this commission is on record as opposing an incinerator, correct?
Mr. Mayor, the city commission adopted a draft and adopt resolution last Wednesday to the Board of County Commissioners of Monday Dade County, specifically objecting to an incinerator being located in or near the Broward County border, in or near the city of Pembroke Pines and Miramar. That's a fact. And this evening, the ordinance before you is a document that you considered on, if I'm first reading at that last week's meeting, to deal with the issue of the regulation of the sale of water and sewer outside the city's borders and boundaries.
Mayor?
Go ahead, Commissioner. Uh, Schwartz?
To the city attorney, Mr. Farkas is right on the money. So it's what Mr. Farkas just asked is the questions I've been asking now for a period of a few weeks to the city attorney's office. Am I correct, sir? With respect to precedent, whether or not the city of Pembroke Pines can lawfully prevent water application? As a matter of fact, back in August, the mayor, you were not in attendance that evening. It was four of us. The meeting, under new business, at eleven-thirty-four, you were, the city attorney was requested by one commissioner to do some work and come back and provide an ordinance. However, at that meeting, since it was past eleven-thirty at night, this commission did not take the appropriate steps to extend the meeting. And if there was the impression that there was a motion given, that motion was not given in the sunshine because we didn't extend the meeting, even though the meeting was still being recorded. Despite that, the city attorney's office can't unhear what they heard. So the city attorney's office wrote a memorandum, and I know, Mr. Goran, it may be a little bit difficult for you to read it this evening, but I would like to get on the record, verbatim, the memorandum that is in the backup, that will certainly answer some of the questions that Mr. Farkas raised, some questions that the public has raised. Before we get to that memorandum, though, sir, is it true that the city Pembroke Pines has provided water to Broward County in the past?
City Attorney?
Mr. Mayor and Commission, I can answer only what I know factually. The administration have a better view of what sales have occurred outside, but the end result of which is, is that there have been.
Okay. And if there's a question, City Attorney, that you would defer to city manager, please do so. And do we currently have a contract for outside water services?
City Attorney?
Best to answer your question, let me say the following, if I can. The city spent some number of years in litigation with the CCA folks. You may remember that facility, the immigration site, that was litigated over a period of years, as well as litigation with the town of Southwest Ranches with regards to the issue of the sale of water, which resulted in a decision in the Fourth District Court of Appeals, which we cite to in our memorandum, as a matter of fact. The end result of which is, is that there have been some limited sales to customers outside the city of Pembroke Pines, and the case law discusses the conditions, provisions, and opportunities associated with those potential sales, and we put that and placed that in the memorandum.
Mr. Goran, I don't wanna be too speculative when I ask this question, but the county attorney's office provides legal guidance to the Broward County Commission. Is that correct?
Under the county charter, that's correct.
Okay. So if the county commission was working towards a known procurement for incinerator services, I would imagine that one of the things that hadn't been taken into consideration before even spending a dime in staff time was the fact that the city of Pembroke Pines has provided water in the past to, let's say, a location nearby. Is that, am I off the mark on that?
Just to be clear, what is your question?
My question is, has the county attorney's office provided, provided the city of Pembroke Pines any, have they provided any correspondence or any questions on whether or not the city would engage in an outside water contract, or to basically re-up what we've already once had?
Mayor, respond, Mayor?
Please.
I am not aware of any correspondence in writing or otherwise from Drew Myers, who's the county attorney, regarding the subject matter of what you're describing. I've not had any discussions with Mr. Myers or his professional staff about the issue, or have I received any letters, demands, or other correspondences of any kind regarding this subject or matter.
Mr. Dodge, have you had any correspondence with county administration?
No, I have not.
Okay, so as far as we know, there's nothing on the table from a communication standpoint. So, City Attorney, the dais at the last meeting had questions for purposes of clarification of legal definition, and your office was assigned a task to clarify that language. You provided a memorandum within the last couple hours?
In the context of that request, we thought to put that in writing as a matter of discussion and to offer that, because I cannot independently amend an ordinance absent direction from the commission by majority vote.
Okay, so I'm not gonna ask you to read that memorandum. I think it's quite clear and it's well-written, and I wanna thank you and your staff for providing that. However, the memorandum that is in the backup with respect to this ordinance, because I wanna make sure that this is policy, not politics, when we take this up. It's incredibly important that this city commission does not set up this city for a future, you know, going down to the courthouse and working things out and having one sixty-fours and the whole nine yards. Because we have provided water for thirty years to this general area. So if you wouldn't mind, City Attorney, can you read that memorandum into the record? And then, Mayor, I have one last item, once the City Attorney is done.
City Attorney?
Thank you, Mayor and Commission. Our City Attorney memorandum is number twenty-two-three dash zero seven-nine. It was published on August the twenty-eighth, the subject of which was the city of Pembroke Pines proposed ordinance regarding water services to properties engaging in noxious uses outside the city's municipal boundaries. And the paragraph reads as follows, the actual memo reads as follows for the first paragraph, saying the following. "The intent of this memorandum is to examine the city's legal authority to enact an ordinance establishing a policy refusing to provide water or sewer services to property located outside of the city's municipal boundaries, when the city makes the determination that the proposed uses on such properties are noxious, offensive, contrary to the city's best interests of the city, or adverse to the health, safety, and welfare of the city's residents. The city, having recently resolved its litigation with the town of Southwest Ranches and Core Civic, formerly known as Corrections Corporation of America, is generally aware of the legal requirements and potential legal challenges associated with serving properties outside of its boundaries. The Supreme Court of Florida has stated that, quote, 'A municipality has no duty to supply services to areas outside its boundaries,' citing to a case called Allen's Creek, that's A-L-L-E-N-S Creek Properties Incorporated versus the city of Clearwater, founded at six seventy-nine Southern Second, eleven-seventy-two, and page eleven-seventy-three, a Florida Supreme Court decision of nineteen ninety-six. However, exceptions to the general rule exist in situations where a municipality has contracted to provide services to a property located outside of its boundaries, or in instances where the municipality has assumed the duty to provide those services through its conduct. The type of conduct required for the city to assume the duty could be affirmative expression of intent by the city to provide services to the property. In the city's litigation against CCA, the Fourth District Court of Appeals, which for the record is in West Palm Beach, and affects this district, held that although the city had no duty to supply water and sewer services to areas outside its boundaries, the city expressly manifested the desire or intent to assume that the duty to provide the services to the CCA parcel through its conduct. See generally Corrections Corporation of America versus the city of Pembroke Pines, and that's cited at case number twenty-two-thirty, Southern Second, at four seventy-seven, as a fourth DCA case in twenty seventeen. The conduct the court considered when deciding this case included, but is not limited to the city's approval of an interlocal agreement, where the town, where the town, where in the city stated that it would, quote, "expeditiously approve a future water and wastewater utility agreement with the town." The city's approval of the ILA led to the court's decision to hold as an exception to the above referenced general rule that through its conduct, the city had assumed the legal duty to provide water and wastewater services to this to CCA. While the city has not formally established a service area outside of its municipal boundaries, the city does have a history of providing water and/or sewer service to a number of parcels in the town, as well as in unincorporated Broward County, including the former Broward County landfill and the former women's prison in Everglades Holiday Park. Currently, section fifty-point-ten of the city's code of ordinances entitled Outside City Limits provides as follows. "With one exception, property located outside the city limits shall not be allowed to connect to a city utility system unless the connection is authorized by the city commission," and the word "is authorized by the city commission" is bolded in our memorandum. "The one exception is that commission approval shall not be required for any connection in that area covered by the developers' agreements identified in Exhibit H, Agreement for Sale and Purchase, September twenty-seven, nineteen sixty-two, between the city and the West Hollywood Water Company and the West Hollywood Utility Company," and that's directly from the city's code of ordinances at section fifty-point-ten. "Since the city has not established a service area outside of its boundaries by ordinance, and the city code expressly requires a city commission approval of any connections outside of its boundaries, the city may adopt and codify a policy statement affirming that the city will not provide water and/or sewer service to property outside of its boundaries when the city commission has determined that the proposed uses on such property are noxious, offensive, contrary to the best interests of the city, or adverse to the health, safety, and welfare of the city's residents. However, under the Allen's Creek case and its progeny, including the city's CCA litigation, such a policy position by the city may be subject to legal challenge. More specifically, a court may be asked to determine whether the city's conduct outside of its boundaries, including a history of serving certain areas in the town and in unincorporated Broward County, demonstrates a, quote, 'manifestation of intent to provide water and/or sewer service,' and has established a continuing duty for the city to serve certain parcels outside of its boundaries." Should you have any further questions, please do not hesitate to contact our office.
Thank you.
That's the memorandum.
That was a very good memorandum.
Yeah.
Very clear, very, very clear.
Yeah.
Commissioner Schwartz, one more?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. So, Mr. Farkas, in his search on Google, basically confirmed exactly what the city attorney's memorandum had said. So, City Attorney, was a bootstrap?
A bootstrap?
In legal terms?
A bootstrap, in legal terms, as opposed to in real terms, is essentially a situation where, in a governmental setting, in the adoption of either legislation or policy or otherwise given commitments or orders by local government, where there may be an opportunity to add to that mix of opportunities by adding language, documentation, or support to essentially provide additional security or comfort in the context of what's trying to be accomplished. And that's essentially, you can have a bootstrap in a bond transaction, you have a bootstrap, frankly, in an operational sense, in enforcing an ordinance.
Last question. Mr. City Attorney, the action taken by majority vote or direction consensus to put together your memorandum, your definitions of clarification, did you ever get the impression that the commission was trying to weaken language that the city attorney's office had provided in the resolution that was, I'm sorry, the ordinance, draft ordinance that was in front of us a week ago?
Mayor, respond, Mayor?
Please.
Forgive my voice, by the way, I have my annual aorticitis, and that's unfortunate.
I apologize.
I got it from my wife. She was very kind enough to give it to me.
No, thank you.
I'm not sick. With due respect, Commissioner, and with all the love and affection I have for all of you as public officials, I can't speculate as to what you were thinking. All I can do is work based upon your direction. That memorandum was not prepared or created in a vacuum. We actually researched it very carefully because the questions are serious, and we had to give you the authority to understand how best to approach it. I recall in chambers across the street some years ago, we also issued a memorandum, and many times those memoranda find their way into the courtroom, and they sometimes become Exhibit A, B, or C. And I've been in the courtroom in the past, and sometimes I've seen my own memos in the court's documents and in the court's review.
Right, so, Mayor, my final comment is...
I thought you had it for...
That was a question, my final comment. So, most of us up here work diligently to ensure that we don't go out on social media and misrepresent items that occur here on live TV. I would ask my colleague, who goes on next door, trying to erode and corrode the efforts that are being made up here, to stop.
Commissioner Schwartz?
That's it.
Mayor? Please, no, hold on. We're not going to get into a fistfight here.
We're not going to get into...
I'm going to tell you.
Just asking.
City Attorney.
I'm just asking to speak.
Commissioner Castillo, please, I'm talking.
You don't have to be nasty.
Well, then, why are you keeping it?
I'm just asking to be recognized.
I've heard four times.
Okay.
City Attorney.
You don't have to be nasty.
Would you extend the rules to, the commissioner just spoke about personality and personal attacks, please?
Just as a matter of course, the city has a code of conduct and a code of ethics in the city's code of ordinances that requires civility among collegial bodies, including the mayor and commission.
Thank you.
And for casual staff.
Thank you very much. I brought this item some time ago. It was considered before this commission, and it was duly directed to the city attorney to come back with a legal opinion and ordinance. This item is very properly before us. City Attorney, are we, is Pembroke Pines a general utility that anyone can call upon to provide water and sewer service?
The city of Pembroke Pines, Mayor, the city of Pembroke Pines owns, controls, and manages its own water and sewer system in the city of Pembroke Pines. It is not a provider of service with a service area outside the city of Pembroke Pines.
Mr. Farkas, with all due respect, and I admire you, I've said it several times, and I admire your citizenship, you are incorrect. We are not a utility. We provide water and sewer services to the city of Pembroke Pines residents and businesses, and to others outside of our business, outside of our borders, when we deem it appropriate to enter into an agreement. That's the only... Excuse me, sir.
Mr. Farkas. Mr. Farkas, you had...
I'm going to get into...
Sir!
I'm going to get into...
This is the commission of Pembroke Pines, we're going to act like adults.
Okay.
And we go by rules. Well, then be quiet, please.
Okay. The second thing is, for some time, the city of Pembroke Pines has provided some water and sewer service to Broward County's landfill. Mr. Dodge and I had a conversation on the phone today. The water service is limited to the restrooms in the building, correct, Mr. Dodge?
Well, it's very limited. I use that as an example, too. I assume it's for bathroom and services only.
But it's very, very small, amount of water.
It's anywhere between 1,000 to 2,000 gallons.
And the sewer service that we provide to them is to process their leachate, correct?
Correct.
Okay, and that was under an agreement?
Correct.
Which expired some time ago?
Correct.
So we have no agreement with Broward County, correct?
On the leachate, that's correct.
Okay. Now, in terms of providing this trickle of water that we offer the county, because they do own the land there, correct, Mr. City Attorney?
Based upon my review of the geography with the city's assistant city manager and director of planning and economic development, Mr. Stam, county does own some properties outside the city of Pembroke Pines nearby.
Okay, so let's say the county tomorrow decides, you know what, we're going to build the nuclear power plant at this location. Is Pembroke Pines required to provide them with water because we service their bathrooms?
May I respond, Mayor?
Please.
If any applicant for water and/or sewer service were to seek the city's, to seek access to the city's water and sewer system, they'd have to go through Chapter 50 of the code of ordinances, much like was the case over the years. We have to fill an application out, have to actually support the application, and the ultimate decider is not the city attorney or the city manager. City commission gets to decide whether or not to provide that service.
There you go. So, Mr. Dodge, let me ask you this. You read the agreement, you're familiar generally with the agreement that used to be in place between the city of Pembroke Pines and the county on the southwest regional landfill?
Yes.
Are any specific land uses mentioned in it?
There were none, to my knowledge.
None. No land uses are mentioned in it?
There would not be, it's an agreement for service, and we do not control land uses, only on that side.
And the agreement is to process their leachate?
Correct.
So, we don't really have this Magna Carta agreement with them, sort of along the lines of the application that we once received from CCA that we never voted on, which talked about a specific use and a specific number of gallons and so forth and so on. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. So, we had an agreement with them, the agreement expired, it has not yet been renewed, we expect maybe that might happen, maybe not, but we now face the challenge of a, should we be selling our water and sewer services outside our city limits to land uses that would tend to erode the health, safety, and welfare of the city? And so, a policy has been put forward, which you, city attorney, are telling us we are well within our rights to pass, correct?
First, on, Mayor?
City Attorney?
We stand on the letter of our presentation, the memorandum?
Okay.
Which explains the parameters, and it's fact-driven. But the answer, but is the ordinance, again, the ordinance as drafted is presumed under Florida law to be constitutional, is presumed to be binding upon the affected parties, and it's presumed also to be consistent with Florida law. Absent a challenge by a third party, so we would not draft an ordinance if it was not otherwise legally enforceable. But there are conditions and circumstances that we described in the memo, which are very clearly important to this discussion.
I understand, but you're, I know you have laryngitis. Your answer is yes?
Yes, I am.
Yes, okay. So, this is legally before us, properly before us. This is the second first reading of this ordinance, because the last time it came up, commissioners had concerned about the terms, not about so much, we need to get into whether or not we should do it. I believe we need to do it because it strengthens the city. The city attorney, do you believe that passing this language puts the city in a stronger position with respect to fighting off noxious or offensive uses in the future?
May I respond, Mayor?
Please.
Again, the memorandum speaks for itself in the context of our interpretation, number one. The second part of which is, the question was asked as to what a bootstrap was, and I answered that question. This is simply an additional policy-driven predicate to, intended to protect the city's better interests.
Intended to protect the city's better interests.
That's how we drafted it.
And have you received any comments or suggestions for substitute language from any source during the time that we read this item last and tonight?
If I may respond, given the nature of attorney-client privilege, I can't discuss what was discussed with commissioners, but I do not have before me this evening any specific set of comments to provide.
So, my question is, were you provided with any specific recommendations for changes to the language?
I do not have any documentation on the DA's to provide that information.
Okay, so if anybody here has better language than that which has been crafted by our very capable attorneys, that would say it better, I'm open to that possibility, I'm open to that discussion, that we should have it. But we face a number of new challenges that weren't contemplated when this water and sewer ordinance was passed. And the city attorney has already told you that by strengthening the language, we position the city in a better way to deal with those potential threats. And that is the intent of this ordinance, is to better position us to deal with it. Now, there are worries about, well, what if they sue? Let them sue! If the county sues us, they will have to go to 164 first, correct?
Litigation between, may I respond, Mayor?
Go ahead.
Litigation between government agencies or governed by Chapter 164 would require a process to be implemented before a lawsuit actually gets filed.
So let me tell you what 164 is. 164 is when, well, part of 164 is, where one city wants to sue a county, or a county wants to sue a school board, or, you know, two governmental agencies want to sue one another. And the law requires that before they file that lawsuit, they're going to have to have a power-up. They need to get together, both city commissions. It has to be a public meeting, at which residents are invited to attend. Can you imagine us calling a 164 because Broward County wants to sue us, or anybody else wants to sue us, trying to force our hand to allow them to have a nuclear power plant, or an incinerator, or something else that we might, notice how carefully I'm saying this to you, might find offensive or noxious to the health, safety, and welfare of the city? And that they shouldn't have already been put on notice that if you come here with such a thing, we're going to say no. We're very likely to say no, because that's our policy. It doesn't require us to say no, it doesn't say that we must say no, it doesn't say that we'll say yes. It simply says that we have a policy built into the ordinance that these types of uses are not something that we want to go out of our way. Now, let me repeat that. Go out of our way, because every single time we provide water or and/or sewer service outside of our city limits, we do it by contract, by an agreement. We go out of our way to do it. So if we're going to go out of our way to do it, it should be because it makes sense, not just for them, but for the city as well. That's the language that you have in front of you. Two last comments, depending on what other issues are brought up. Two last comments. The first is, by passing this, we position ourselves in a stronger place to deal with circumstances that are unknown at present. And that's a good thing to do. It puts tools in our boxes, and it makes us stronger. By not passing it, when we had the opportunity, it makes us weaker. Why in the world would we do that? And my last comment is, I came to the United States from a communist country where the, which we fled, because my father and my mother and my family did not have the privilege of free speech. And I'll be damned if anyone's going to inflict on me requests or anything else. I will say what I feel is appropriate in my city, or anywhere else. So, hopefully that ends that foolishness. And I will continue to do that throughout the entirety of my life, just as I have before. So, I'm very, very proud to move this item. I'm hoping it gets all five of your votes, because let me tell you, if we don't have this tool, and an incinerator or something horrible comes our way, and we couldn't stop it because we then learned that the tool we needed was right here, and we said no to it, there will be no forgiveness for the people that vote no. Thank you.
Vice Mayor?
Wow, a lot of information, huh? I just wanted to clarify from the last meeting that I did not support this item. While I understood the intent of the item, my questions were more specifically on the additional language that was putting in there, the descriptive words, and were they legally defensible words? Were they actually words that would help to strengthen a position that we had? So I've been able to have some discussion, I've done some research on my own, and I will just say that we can put language in there, but that does not ever prevent someone from wanting to sue us in any position that we have out there. So while I do support the intent of what this item is, in any way, shape, form, or fashion, that we might be able to help strengthen our own position against others coming in and wanting to do certain things, the more realistic look of this is, it doesn't, it doesn't really give us any more strength than what we already had, because we did have some good language that was already there, that the same thing has to happen. They still, no matter who it is, have to come before this commission and prove to us, all five of us up here, why they want to do what they want to do, and that we should be servicing them with water and/or sewer. So while the intent is there, and I really don't like the language where it's sort of a threatening language, where, you know, if you don't support this tonight, you're going to be on the bad end of the deal if in fact something should happen. No, 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 that's not what you say to your colleagues, that's not how you deal with issues, I'm sorry. The, a little bit off this exact item, however, because it's been brought up, Mayor, I feel like I'm on point to be able to speak a little bit about it. The whole purpose of this is, has been brought about because of the garbage and the incinerator issue. That's where this is all coming from. So, I did a lot of my own research, and I went back to actually where I thought all this kind of started, which was back in 2018 with the Broward League of Cities. And so I found a way to be able to go in to all of their meetings and look at the links, the minutes of each one of their meetings. And I just wanted to provide this quick information, Mayor, I won't be long. Since December of 2018, they have had over 70 meetings of this SWWG group. And I went through, I don't know how many of them, I was falling asleep after a while because it was so late in the night, going, because the way they break it down online is you can go to the exact portion of the minutes that you want to listen to. And so I clicked into where, and he was here, you all were able to hear him speak, County Commissioner Bean-Fur, and it was usually his minutes, his voice on there. And so, while I randomly went through them, and honestly, I went through a lot, a lot of them, not once, not one time did I ever hear or see the word "incinerator" in their language. The gist of their meetings always was that Broward County has a big problem, and it's getting bigger with garbage disposal and recycling. When I say "we," I'm saying this is what was being said there. We need to find a county-wide solution with all cities participating, but we must first form this SWWG, get the cities to sign on, pay their entry fee, which if you all recall was $600,000 for the city of Pembroke Pine. The next steps were to then, and this is their, your, their own language, their next steps were to hire an executive director, to hire an attorney, to begin developing an annual budget, establish the maximum amount of debt that this executive committee could approve, and after budget is approved, begin invoicing the parties for their pre-special assessment contributions, meaning all the cities would start then getting invoiced for what they're supposed to be doing. So my thoughts on that, and I'm going to ask city clerk, I don't know if she can do this or not, but this is the link to the VLOC minutes, and I think any of you that are interested should take this, and should go on there, and should read some of the stuff that was out there. It's very, very interesting information on how, and it answers a lot of questions, because, you know, we've had meetings here, we've talked about this, I had my town hall meeting, which there were a lot of people here, there were a lot of questions, there was a lot of information put out there, but y'all need to hear it, and y'all need to see it yourself, because it's really, it's really quite something. So my opinion on this, and the item tonight, because of the intent of it, while I'm not sure that it truly does strengthen us any, because I think, again, according to what the memo of the city attorney said, however, under the Allen's Creek case and its progeny, including the city's CCA litigation, such a policy position by the city may be subject to a legal challenge. Again, anyone can sue you if they want to sue you, and... Again, anyone can sue you if they want to sue you, and that could happen. But I'm, I'm going to, I'm going to go forward with, with, with tonight, because I just think the policy itself, whether it had these extra words in it, is not, is not a bad thing. But this is, this is my, this is my opinion so far on this. If this is a county-wide problem, that being garbage disposal recycling, then the county should be fronting all the money for this project, and then present a plan to the cities, not the other way around. This is a county problem, they need to step up to the plate, they need to spend their money before they ask all of us to put our money into something to just hire directors and attorneys and, and begin developing an annual budget with not even any maximum set on it yet. So, I, Mr. Farkas, can you come up for just a second, please? I'm not sure you ever thought I'd ask you to come up, is there, right?
Name, name just again, please. Yes, my name again is Kenneth Farkas, 5331 Southwest 199th Avenue, Pembroke Pines.
First off, I just have to tell you, I'm, I'm, while we sometimes have been at odds, I've never not enjoyed your passion.
Thank you.
I've never not enjoyed your research.
Great.
So, you sent me a little message about something that I, that I brought up, actually at the town hall meeting, and I brought it up again, is, and you mentioned it tonight, that 75% amount that needs to be reached, that, that, so, I'm going to ask you, based upon what you said to me, if you and I can meet and have a discussion and see how we can better, because I've already started with some of the communities, have some letters here, talking about not wanting to be part of this whole issue, okay? So, I'm asking you if, if you and I could work together to try, to try to present a good case for other communities to, to see that this is maybe not such a good thing, and to help our cause, which is putting a, a dead stop to this whole incinerator issue. So, we can do that?
Absolutely. And I, I just want to address Commissioner Castillo. I don't think anything's wrong with the amendment that you're adding. I don't think it does anything, but, but if the goal is to stop an incinerator, it's useless. You, again, everybody talked about this, all the previous cases were against private developers, not another municipality, and nobody was able to give me a city in Broward County that has denied utilities to Broward County and has been successful, because it doesn't exist. So, if the case is to do the incinerator, there is one way to do it, and I'm happy to help in that respect.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you want to, Mr. Farkas?
Further discussion?
I made the motion. I wouldn't, I made the motion. Who made a second?
Mr. Mayor, Mayor, we have a case.
Is that?
Another person wants to say.
Point, point of order, please?
Just, hold on. City Attorney?
Yes, Mayor.
Where are we in the process?
There's a motion on the floor to approve the ordinance on first reading.
Okay.
Is there a second?
I didn't hear a second.
No, no second.
Was there a second by Commissioner Good?
I heard no second announcement.
So, the motion dies for lack of a second?
Why don't you ask if someone wants to second it?
What? We did that. You motioned it.
No, I didn't hear you say that.
City Clerk, did I go through a process?
I believe discussion began immediately.
Right.
I did hear the Commissioner, I did hear Commissioner Castillo make the motion, but then discussion proceeded immediately, and I did not hear a second.
Let's see, let's get it on the floor. There's a motion on the floor, is there a second?
Mr. Mayor, I will go ahead and second that.
You what?
Yes, sir.
I can't, can't hear you.
Please, I will second that.
Okay, all right, well, we have it on the floor now, this is a motion. Go ahead, sir. Come up, you need your name and address for the record.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, ladies and gentlemen of the City Commission. My name is George Navarini, I'm a political activist well-known to each of you. I reside at 510 Northwest 199th Avenue, here in the city of Pembroke Pines. I rise this evening in support of this legislation. It sends, I hope you give me 23 minutes. As I said before, I rise in support of this, this bill as provided, because I think it sends a signal, a strong and unequivocal signal, not only to the residents of Pembroke Pines that you are standing for them in your, in your constitutional duty to preserve and protect the interests and the people of the city, but it also sends an equally strong signal to any entity, governmental, public, or private, that wishes to bring something, as the legislation says, that is obnoxious and stands against the good order of our city and the health and safety of its inhabitants. We are in very interesting times right now. We have two counties that wish to place obnoxious incinerators within miles of our residents, both Miami-Dade County and Broward County. And the city of Pembroke Pines needs to be unequivocal and powerful in its message of not know, we won't build this, no, it will not be built, period, hard stop. The legislation as written gives the teeth, and it makes it abundantly clear, that we will defend the interests of our city and the people of our city. At this, like I mentioned before, we have two issues right now. An incinerator that is talked about in Broward County, an incinerator that we are days from having it approved in the city of my, in, in Miami-Dade County. So, this even, at this point, sends a message to Miami-Dade, even if they never ask for a drop of water, but this city will not stand for it. And several of you mentioned the threat of lawsuits. If you exist as a city, you already have a threat of a lawsuit. Is this correct, City Attorney?
I, I'd like to let Mr. Never say, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, anything you do or fail to do opens you up the litigation that should never stop you from doing the right thing. This is the right bill, and the people of the city of Pembroke Pines ask you to pass this. Now, you have my time.
Thank you. Sir? Sir? Need your name and address for the record, please?
Sam?
Yes. Get the microphone on.
Yep.
My name is David Brubeck. I reside at 5801 Southwest 199th Avenue in Pembroke Pines. Thank you for the opportunity to speak, and greetings this evening. It's difficult, I'm, I'm not qualified to render a legal opinion, but I would say this, I would say anyone can sue anyone at any time. And I agree with the person who spoke before me, that this is a warning shot and sends a message, and I think it would send a strong message, and I thank you for proposing it, Commissioner Castillo.
You're welcome.
I also want to make sure that the point is made, that the people who are opposing the incinerator don't just oppose it in our area, we oppose it everywhere in Broward County. And we don't want, we don't want to annex our children's backyards, but we don't want to annex anyone else's children's backyards. Sometimes people come up with the point that there's no incentive, record of incinerator, or this or that, and it's difficult to not see that as disingenuous. When we produced an eyewitness who personally identified Commissioner Fur and said that he said, "Waste of energy," which is incinerator, and he was here and he's on record, so that, that is one thing. And then, we also had comments quoted in a newspaper from an interview with the other Commissioner Ross, so I, that seems disingenuous to me. Also, it seems that the tape from the meeting, Ms. Seifel, that you so generously and graciously hosted, was edited, and there's parts missing. And I wondered if it would be possible to get the original tape without any editing.
I've, I've never heard about it being edited, so, Mr. Dodge?
Very good.
Our tapes are not edited, so we will go back and look at the original.
Very good. So, and you'll, who, will somebody follow up and let me know if there's a way to get the original tape?
Well, we've published it.
In case it has been.
I, I believe it's online, sir, so I will check for you. And you're talking about.
I've seen what's online.
Are you talking about the town hall?
The town hall meeting, the, the, Ms. Seifel.
Yes, we'll, we'll make sure it's available to you.
Thank you. And so, when we'll contact me, who should I expect contact from?
City Clerk's office.
Thank you so much. And I would like to support this amendment, thank you.
Mayor, can I clear?
Further discussion?
Yes, I just want to clear one thing. Mr. Brubeck, the comment that I, that I made about no, no reference to incinerator was based, as I said, specifically on what, what I was talking about, which was the VLOC minutes of all of their meetings that they've had, the ones that I listened to, and I listened to quite a number of them. It was a long, long, long night listening to a lot of them, and I'd never heard that word in, in, incinerator in there, so that's why I was referencing when I said that, not what, not what you were bringing.
Okay, further discussion? Further discussion?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to speak.
Wish you good.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, you know, a lot of great conversation with everybody. I, I, I do still want to remain focused on, you know, my comments that I had made from the meeting last week. Again, I, I don't disagree with the intent of the ordinance. I actually support the intent of the ordinance. I still have concern about the language. I even alluded to the fact last week that particularly the language that speaks to noxious and offensive, a rather subjective in language, and they actually have some very far-reaching implication, even well beyond, you know, what the intent here is, which is to be able to defend themselves against uses that are, as you said eloquently, erode our, our, our city. So, anything that, to me, that is in the best interest of the city, or anything that is adverse to the health, safety, and welfare of the city, I, I agree to that 100%, and I think an incinerator is clearly unequivocally the, a health, safety, and welfare issue for this city. So, I think that language alone would sort of address the, the incinerator issue. But again, one of the things that I would like to ask is, I'd like to amend this language such that we remove the words "noxious" and "offensive" because of the fact that it's rather subjective, and it kind of leaves other people who are innocent in this process subject to things that may not be appropriate for them, so.
You offering amendment?
Yes, sir, I did.
See, there's amendment, there's a second. We have a second by Commissioner Castillo. I, discussion on the amendment. Discussion on the amendment. City Clerk, call the role on the amendment.
To, to, Mr. Mayor, for the record.
Commissioner?
Leave those two.
Yes.
Thank you.
Commissioner Castillo?
Yes.
Commissioner Schwartz?
Yeah.
Vice Mayor Seifel?
Yes.
Mayor Ordus?
Yes.
Motion passes.
The Indian Commissioners?
Good.
Goods voted.
Yes, he voted.
Did you call Commissioner Good?
Yes.
I missed it, I'm sorry. Okay, so that language is, the amendment is passed. Further discussion, Commissioner Good?
I think we have to pass the item as amended.
Any further discussion?
No additional comments, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Now, when the motion is amended, call the role, please.
Commissioner Castillo?
Yes.
Commissioner Good?
Yes.
Commissioner Schwartz?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Seifel?
Yes.
Mayor Ordus?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Mr. Mayor, Commission for the record, I believe that the, the ordinance has been pre-advertised, consistent with Florida statutes, and if this ordinance is passed through to the City Clerk's office, it'll be considered by the Commission in these chambers on the 20th of September.
Let me, let me just make a closing remark, if we could. This city, 172,000 people strong, will not ever give in to anybody that tries to take our rights away. That's why you heard this Commission unanimously vote, "No incinerator." You heard this Commission, a letter I sent to Dade County emphasizing, "No incinerator." We also had a motion by Commissioner Castillo, which included that letter to them, "No incinerator." I'll stand and fight any day for somebody who wants to sue us on an obnoxious issue like that, and I give you my word on it. So, thank you all, have a great night. Good job. Good job. Yes? Take your time, take your time.
I'll get to, to the city attorney.
Oh, nice, man. Look at it, Castillo's span. Pose a mark.
Feel better, Sam?
Yes, Sam, we.
I apologize.
No, 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 I appreciate it. He, he was going to do it on purpose.